I'd like to call to order the April 22nd meeting of the Shelby Township Planning Commission. Madam Secretary, would you call the board?
Mr. Dallo.
Here.
Mr. DeCicco.
Here.
Ms. Putros.
Here.
Mr. Meredith.
Here.
Mr. Turner.
Here.
Mr. Apone.
Here.
Mr. Flynn.
Here.
Chairman Moffett, we have a quorum.
Great. First item is approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved and supported, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item is approval of the minutes from April 8th.
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved and supported, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. This evening, we have four site plans that we'll be reviewing and then one item regarding the capital improvement plan for the township. The first one, site plan number 19-10, Joe Youngblood from Shelby Township Parks and Recreation. I assume our planner is going to represent the... Do I get to make you go talking?
No.
From the microphone?
No. I think most of you know that the Township Board purchased the Old Boys and Girls Club to be the new community center. And there's an attached site plan that shows some modest improvements that are going to be made to the site to accommodate that use. That includes an addition of a sidewalk from the rear door to the parking lot, striping of the paved area that was formerly a basketball court north of the existing parking lot, resurfacing the parking lot, adding some catch basins, and addition of a sanitary sewer manhole. We thought we should probably have something on record documenting that we approved the site plan, so it's really, in my view, kind of a housekeeping item, but I felt I needed to bring it to the commission for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Is there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, I undertake a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve site plan 19-10 proposing modifications to the Shelby Township Activity Center site at 14975 21 Mile Road, as submitted.
Support.
Moved by DeCicco, support by Turner, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Commissioner DeCicco?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Apone?
Yes.
Mr. Dallo?
Yes.
Commissioner Meredith?
Yes.
Mr. Putros?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. Okay, next item, site plan number 19-06, Antonio Varelli regarding an industrial facility. Name and address?
Frank Salamoni, 48701 Hayes Road, Shelby Township.
What are you asking this body for?
Pardon?
Maybe a brief description of the project and...
Basically, proposing to build two industrial buildings, basically the same side, just mirrored image, and basically here to just answer whatever questions you may have based on the site plan that we submitted.
Yes. So this is an industrial parcel in Wing Industrial Subdivision Lot 8, and we did a preliminary review on this, that's why there's so many, there's little comments. The engineer had some few minor comments, nothing of, you know, substantive nature, so I recommend approval.
Okay. So the board, any questions?
I do have some.
Okay. Mr. Putros?
So the buildings that you have proposing, they go all the way to the property line?
Yes, on the sides, yes.
So the footings of these buildings will encroach onto the adjacent?
No, they'll be right at the, the edge of the footings will be at the property.
Well, the spread of the footings will be on the adjacent parcel. You can't go vertically for footings.
The edge of the, is going to be on the footing, we're going to come in, so say it's a 16-inch footing, it'll be inside the building four inches, basically, or whatever size the footing would have to be.
So your building doesn't go all the way to the property line?
The block will be right on the property line, yes.
Block of what, of the building or the footings?
Building, yep. In the footing, I don't know if you can draw, but, so you've got the 12-inch block wall, the block wall is on the property line, and the footing, depending on what size it is, we're not sure, it will come inside the building.
So the footings will have spread footing, so the block wall on the property line?
Yeah, but the one side's going to maintain, we're going to spread out. It's not centered right on the footing.
No setback requirement through this county development?
Okay.
Okay.
Do you have construction easement to go on the adjacent parcel to build the building up to the property line?
No, we will not go on their property to build.
How can you do a wall up to the property line without going on the neighbor's parcel?
Right up to the property line, I don't know. Sorry, I can't answer that question, I don't know. I mean, I'm trying to answer best I can. The edge of the footing and the edge of the building are going to line up right on the property line.
Construction of, construction of that wall will need to be, you need to have work area to excavate, so you will be, if you're going with the foundation up to the property line, you need to excavate on the adjacent.
You're not excavating on their property, we're not allowed to.
Okay, I'm not going to...
So you're going to put the wall, can I, if I can jump on to you?
Yeah.
So you're going to stand inside the building?
Well, to erect, okay, to erect, I don't know, we may have to get permission to put scaffolding up to block.
You're going to paint the building, I mean, you're going to have to get on the neighbors to do something.
To lay the block, yes. All right, yeah.
Was that kind of where you were going?
Yes.
Okay, all right. But no, as far as, no part, portion of the building itself will be past the property line, no.
Even the footings?
Right. Okay.
And one more question.
Sure.
The easements that you have in the back, you're showing as a storm easement. You're having the trash enclosure within that easement. Do you know where the storm pipe goes?
Know what, I think the engineers want us to pull the trash dumpster out of the easement. Is that one of the, I believe it was one of the stipulations, so we'll be pulling it out of the easement, I believe, yes.
So the location of the trash enclosure?
May be adjusted. I, I don't recall that, if that was a comment or not.
So I guess it's a question to Mr. Glenn, if they change the location of the trash enclosure, do we look at it, do we review it?
We would review it at the staff level.
Okay. That's all I have then.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, I undertake a motion.
Mr. Chairman, to approve site plan number 19-06 for Antonio Varelli, 50521 Wing Drive, parcel number 23-07-24-126-1019, subject to submission of revised site plans, addressing all department and engineering comments.
Support.
Moved by opponent, support by Turner. Any questions on the motion?
Can we say subject to getting the temporary construction easement from the adjacent parcels?
Sure.
Maker?
Yes, that's fine, yep.
Okay. Anything else?
Good catch by the attorney.
I'm sorry?
Nothing.
Commissioner Apone?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Commissioner Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Dallo?
Yes.
Commissioner Meredith?
Yes.
Commissioner DeCicco?
Yes.
Mr. Putros?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Chair votes yes.
Thank you, have a good evening.
You too. Next item is a public hearing for site plan number 19-07, special land use number one, Anthony Donato. I asked the secretary to read the notice as it was published.
Charter Township of Shelby, notice of public hearing. Notice is hereby given that the Planning Commission for the Charter Township of Shelby, Macomb County, Michigan, has received a request for approval of the following special land use. Applicant Anthony Donato, Donato Brothers, 4605 22 Mile Road, Shelby Township, Michigan, 48317. Proposed use: outdoor storage, truck parking. Location: 4485 22 Mile Road, north of 22 Mile Road between Shelby Road and Ryan Road. Site plan number 19-07 SLU-1, Sidwell number 23-07-20-300-061. Legal description is as follows. The Planning Commission will meet on Monday, April 22nd, 2019, at 7:00 PM in the Shelby Municipal Building, 52700 Van Dyke, Shelby Township, Michigan, 5867267243, for the purpose of holding a public hearing on the special land use application. The application for special land use and the site plan may be examined at the Planning and Zoning Department in the municipal building, Monday through Friday, from 8:30 AM to 5:00 PM. Written comments may be submitted to the Planning Commission at the above address prior to the hearing. Oral comments will be heard during the public hearing. This notice is provided pursuant to the requirements of Michigan Public Act 110 of 2006 as amended. Shelby Township Planning Commission, Jerome Moffett Chair, Raquel Moore Secretary. This was published in the Shelby Utica News on April 3rd, 2019. There were 30 property owners and two applicants were notified by first-class mail on April 3rd, 2019.
Great, thank you. Mr. Kirk, did the publication meet all legal requirements?
Yes, it did.
Okay. And then, could you explain the current zone, the present zoning and if this special land use request is appropriate?
Present zoning is HM, which is Heavy Manufacturing, which is large-scale manufacturing. In this case, they're asking for this outside type of storage, which is a special land use in that provision.
Okay, inappropriate.
Yeah.
Great. Did we receive any correspondence?
No, we did not, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Format for the public hearing will be as follows. The petitioner will come up, a representative state the reasons, what they're requesting, reasons for it, then we'll bring it back to the board to ask any questions they may have, I'll then open it up to the public to offer any comment, ask any questions. Once all the questions are asked, then I'll bring the petitioner back up to answer the questions. It's not a debate, we're just trying to get, you know, as many questions answered and opinions reviewed as possible. So with that, we have a familiar face.
Thank you. Pete Snyder, Urban Land Consultants, 8800 23 Mile Road, Shelby Township, Michigan, representing Donato Brothers, the applicant tonight. This is a piece of property that you've seen before, a couple of years ago. That is the site plan as it used to be approved, meaning the Conrail property used to cut diagonally just at the right side of what I have outlined there in yellow, and what was south of that line or to the right was zoned HM, and then the rear was zoned R1C. In front of you, very recently, a couple of months ago perhaps, was a rezoning for that rear portion to HM, Heavy Manufacturing, and in addition to that, since the Conrail property has changed hands, the parcels have been combined and it's now a single unified parcel, unlike when that initial site plan was proposed. So with that initial site plan approval, they occupied the site and they had the truck storage there to the right, and now, and they've been using it for a couple of years now. Now they just wish to extend that truck parking farther to the north, that'd be to the left, in that same, you see the same yellow trapezoid there on the left-hand side. Because the parcel is HM and it abuts the residential zoning, it requires, of course, a major screening buffer to the north, that is extreme left, which is a six-foot berm with some specific plantings, of course, spelled out in your ordinance, which are shown there. I've, I've seen the comments from the planning and the engineering, they were forwarded to me, just a couple of things on that. There were, there are no plans to combine this parcel with the parcel to the east, although Donato Brothers does own the parcel to the east. And in fact, for instance, the question about how they'll handle trash or where the trash receptacle will be, they're using the, there's not much trash generated there, but what, what is being generated goes in the trash receptacle on the parcel to the east that there is, is an existing receptacle there. At this point, they weren't proposing any lighting, I'll discuss that more with, with the applicant and just see if he proposes on putting lighting in the future, it's probably wise that we add it to this site plan and have it approved now rather than to put it in and ask for forgiveness after, as sometimes happens. And also, I saw a comment there about putting in a turnaround for the fire department. That's fairly easy to accomplish at the extreme north end, we'll just put in a hammerhead turnaround, meeting their requirements. It'll reduce the proposed truck storage parking by at least two spaces, maybe four, but again, it's fairly easy to accomplish, it'll be just to the, just right up next to the berm, little turnaround area for a fire truck if necessary. So with that, I am certainly available for any questions you may have.
Do you want to explain the berm, what you're proposing, the buffer between the residential?
Yeah, the, the major screening buffer is 50 feet, developed either with a wall or with the berm, and with certain plantings, you know, six-foot-high evergreens plus bushes, arborvitae are what we specified, although the applicant, Donato Brothers Landscaping, says, you know, we're probably going to put in juniper instead because the deer don't eat that quite as bad. Again, but that's also, there's a specific list of allowed landscaping materials in your ordinance, and of course, we'll follow that for all the plantings on the berm, so.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
I do.
Mr. Dallo?
So, the, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead, Mr. Dallo.
Mr. Snyder, just the, the storage parking, that, the landscaping, the owners trucking, parking in there, or it's going to be outside trucks?
Some of it is for his own, but most of it is for lease.
We know approximate number of trucks that is going to be parked in the facility in there?
It's listed on the plant, can I use the mobile? I'll go to the mobile line for this one.
I don't see it, I'm sorry if it's missed.
It'd be over in the site criteria, I think it's... So there are 53 there now that were approved under the old site plan, and this site plan expands that another 48, although with the hammerhead turnaround, it's going to be 46, maybe 44, after we put in the required fire department turnaround at the north end.
After cutting the trees in the north side, how close we're going to be to the resident? Is that going to, I know you...
Yeah, the berm, the berm and the plantings on the berm are 50 feet immediately, and now there'll be another, another 20 feet of required turnaround that has to be kept open for the fire department. So there won't be any trucks closer than 70 feet to the north property line.
Thank you, Mr. Snyder.
Putros?
So I did drive the site yesterday and I was looking, I did drive in the front of those homes, and I was looking at the site next door to it, and trucks, I was able to see them, and we're getting closer now to the property line with the 50-foot or 70-foot. The trees that you're putting on top of the berm, how high are they?
I believe they're, they're required to be six feet high.
How high do they get after?
30, 35 feet total. I mean, at full growth, yeah, easily, I mean, they're...
Time to get there, right?
Yeah, they're sprucing, yeah. But, you know, the tops of them are already, what, 12 feet off the ground just when they go in.
I'm just concerned about the dust, the noise, the look is, I'm, I'm very concerned, so I think I'm going to vote against it just because of that. One more thing, detention, I think the engineer asked for detention.
They asked for stormwater management, not specifically detention. The, the earlier site plan that came in disturbed more than this, and really, it's just sheet runoff to that, I guess it used to be...
Same swell.
The swell or the former canal that was right next to the, to the Conrail property. So I think it's just a, it's just an issue of swell drainage.
Okay.
Yep.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, to Mr. One, is there any requirement to the truck parking to be paved at all?
If the engine, the engineer will frequently allow gravel for these types of settings?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, this is not only about this issue here, but we have another parking, truck parking area, lots that we have a lot of dust issue for, say, that people bring that as an issue.
They're required to have gravel, dust-free surface of a certain specification typically.
Thank you.
We usually recommend that they put down asphalt millings on the top because it keeps the dust down pretty well.
Yes, thanks, thank you, Mr. Snyder.
This is the only public hearing, the Planning Commission will hold on this special land use request. All remarks will be entered into the record for Township Board evaluation. We are recommending body, and the Township Board will evaluate our recommendation. The Township Board will make the final decision on this request. This time, anyone is welcome to ask, come up, ask questions or offer their comments on this item. Going once, going twice, okay, back to the board, to the planner.
With the site plan, I didn't have any issues with it, the applicant addressed all the buffering, you know, and it complies with the zoning ordinance, and again, it's consistent with the master plan, I don't have a problem with it, and Mr. Snyder addressed some of my comments. The only thing that I wanted to bring to your attention is I requested that an additional 40 feet be paved into the parking lot to mitigate some of that dust. I think if you flip your plan over, it showed it originally on the, on, on your plan. So it looks like it extends into the property line a little bit better and past the berm, so I would recommend that they further extend that concrete into that site as previously proposed.
Is that an issue?
Yep, no objections. I don't know why we changed it, actually, so, no objections.
Okay. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Our recommendation this evening must be based on the following: compatibility with adjacent land uses, consistent with and promote the intent and purpose of the special land use, compatibility with the natural environment, consistent with the capacities of public services and facilities affected by the proposed use, protect the public health, safety, and welfare, and the adequacy of public access to the site. We may recommend approval this evening, we can disapprove the request, or we can table it to evaluate information further if we deem necessary. This time, I undertake a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Turner?
I move to approve site plan number 19-07 SLU-1 for Anthony Donato, based on the following findings. The project is consistent with the recommendations for this area from the adopted master plan. The project is consistent with existing development and zoning patterns on 22 Mile Road between Ryan Road and Shelby Road. The site will be integrated into the circulation pattern of the abutting properties. A revised site plan fully complying with all of the proposed department comments is required, including the additional paving of the lot as proposed here tonight by our planner.
Support.
Okay, moved by Turner, support by Moore, are there any questions on the motion? Hearing none, Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Flynn?
Yes.
Commissioner Apone?
Yes.
Commissioner Dallo?
Yes.
Commissioner Meredith?
Yes.
Commissioner DeCicco?
Yes.
Commissioner Putros?
No.
And Chair, Chair votes yes.
Thank you.
Good luck. Next, site plan number 19-08, special land use number two, Sean Scott, Scott Property Group. This also is a public hearing, so I'll ask the secretary to read the notice as published.
Charter Township of Shelby, notice of public hearing. Notice is hereby given that the Planning Commission for the Charter Township of Shelby, Macomb County, Michigan, has received a request for approval of the following special land use. Applicant Sean Scott, Scott Property LLC, 46350 Woodall Road, Shelby Township, Michigan, 48317. Proposed use: outdoor storage, truck parking. Location: 5281 Auburn, northeast side of Auburn Road between Ryan Road and Mound Road. Site plan number 19-08 SLU-2, Sidwell number 23-07-32-226-006. Legal description is as follows. Planning Commission will meet on Monday, April 22nd, 2019, at 7:00 PM in the Shelby Municipal Building, 52700 Van Dyke, Shelby Township, Michigan, 5867267243, for the purpose of holding a public hearing on the special land use application. The application for special land use and the site plan may be examined at the Planning and Zoning Department in the municipal building, Monday through Friday, from 8:30 AM to 5:00 PM. Written comments may be submitted to the Planning Commission at the above address prior to the hearing. Oral comments will be heard during the public hearing. This notice is provided pursuant to the requirements of Michigan Public Act 110 of 2006 as amended. Shelby Township Planning Commission, Jerome Moffett Chair, Raquel Moore Secretary. This was published in the Shelby Utica News on April 3rd, 2019. There were 23 property owners and two applicants were notified by first-class mail on April 3rd, 2019.
Great. Mr. Kirk, did the publication meet all legal requirements?
Yes, it did.
Okay. Can you explain the uses under the present zoning and if this special land use request is appropriate?
Well, the current zoning is C2 and R1C, which are commercial and residential zones. However, in this case, there's been a long time nonconforming use carried on here, so for those reasons, we've brought it in as a special land use because of the outside storage. I don't know, Flynn, you want to expand anymore on that?
Yeah, there's, there, let me offer a little bit of history then, offer a little comments of what Bob said. The site was occupied for many years by a plumbing contractor, and if you look at the old aerial photographs, it was a lot of outdoor storage, and the last occupant was using it for outdoor storage without the benefit of any approval. In addition to that, they took down some significant vegetation between this site and the office building to the south, which was a point of concern not only for the neighbors but for the township. So as a result of some vigorous enforcement from the building department, that tenant was moved out of the site, and we had an opportunity to talk to these gentlemen about the reuse of the site, and we were considering processing that, we had three options. One, just a standard site plan. Two, expansion of nonconforming use, but they're really not expanding the nonconforming use, they're contracting it. And three was do as a special land use, which can encompass a lot of other activities. As it turns out, and they'll explain, there is no outdoor storage, just parking lot. So I think that become, makes, brings things into closer compliance with zoning, not less compliance. So we're moving in the right direction here, that doesn't mean there aren't some changes we still have to make, but the C2 says you can have any of the following uses as special land use and any uses similar to those. So this is similar to what we'd call a nursery or landscape sort of contract, this is a hybrid use that could fit in C2 or LL.
So we're no longer considering this a nonconforming use?
No. It's, if we approve it through a special land use, then this is an approved use.
Okay.
Because, again, the outdoor storage is going away.
Right.
That was the key component that was nonconforming.
Got it.
So that's just a little bit of background, I think, again, there's some adjustments that still need to be made, I think, to make the site more compatible with the neighbors, but I think there's some good design solutions available to everybody here, and I'll get into that after their presentation, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. To the secretary, did we receive correspondence on this?
Yes, we did, Mr. Chair. We received correspondence from Doctors Anita and Zena Soderov, and they have concerns regarding the placement of the storage building, the parking lot, and also the fencing. We also received correspondence from, on behalf of them, regarding the disruption and conflict that they feel that might occur on behalf of that building and the special land use. And then also, we received correspondence from Mr. and Mrs. String regarding concerns about traffic, safety. They have a neighboring business called Air Conditioning Engineers, and they have concerns as well about this.
Okay, great, thank you. The format for the public hearing will be very similar, almost exactly, as the previous item. The petitioner, representative come up, state what their request is, reason for it, I'll then bring it back to the board to ask any questions, offer our comments, I'll then open it up to the public to ask any questions, offer comments. Once I receive, I'll list all the questions, I'll bring the petitioner back up to answer those questions. And with that, you gentlemen, if you do speak, I need you to name and your address, and then there's a sign-in sheet I'll need you to fill out, so.
I'm Sean Scott, Scott Property Group, LLC, 46350 Woodall, Shelby Township, Michigan. I purchased the property, we own a lawn care company called Richter's Beautification, we've been in the city of Utica for 10 years now, and this opportunity came that we, that we wanted to buy the property because we're an expanding business. I think there's some miscommunication with what we actually do, we're not a landscaper with, you know, dump trucks or skid steers or, you know, mulch bins or...
Could you bring that mic down just a little bit?
Or nursery or anything like that, you know, we're more, we're a fertilizing company. So basically, you know, we want to propose the building that's on the site plan for storage of our equipment, that would be more like, they're not commercial mowers, they're like ride-on buggies that we fertilize with, and then the outside storage is for truck And then the outside storage is for truck parking. And currently, what we run is just normal Chevy vans for our fertilizing. So our business is based that. We, you know, the guys come in in the morning, they get their trucks, they're gone, you know, for the whole day. And then they come back and they go into the building to load their product, and then they park their trucks outside. So we're very low-key, very quiet. We're also seasonal. We're not there in the wintertime. Just the office staff would be there in the winter. So, that's pretty much what we do. With, this is Steve Wagner from Sharp Engineering. He's the one, the civil engineer that designed everything. We felt that, you know, with the proposed building and the location that we put it, we thought that would be less invasive to the doctor's office, and I know they have a lot of concerns. It's not only would the building kind of block their view of the whole property, it also blocks the view of another property to the north that has outside storage and lots of buildings also. We're trying to, you know, make them happy. I, you know, talked with them last year when we purchased the property. You know, I thought we were kind of in an understanding a little bit. You know, we never presented the plans. We were just talking on the property of where the building might be. And, you know, we're, we just want to make everybody happy.
So product and vehicles will be stored inside the building you're proposing?
The trucks would be outside. Like I said, they're just Chevy vans. You know, they're not dump trucks and trailers and all that, but our product would be stored inside in our machines.
Regulated by the state, the fertilizer?
Yeah, Michigan Department of Ag on the fertilizer side, yes.
How you store it?
Correct. We're an all-granual company. We're organic-based. With our weed control, stuff like that, we've got to have containment skids and stuff like that for weed control.
Okay.
We've been licensed.
Inspected occasionally by the state?
Yes, yes. We've been licensed with the Michigan Department of Ag since 2001. With no problems.
To the board?
We're here to answer any questions.
Okay, good.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Putros is first.
Okay.
So, the parking spaces, are they going to be paved, or?
They would be gravel, existing millings.
Mr. Win, for commercial sites, do we require, do we, I guess, require paved parking?
In this case, since it has been used for that purpose in the past, if the engineer accepted that, we would accept that, in this case. They have paving into the site, I think into the, from Auburn Road, past the, there's a parking area there for customers, and then when you get to the gate, the rest of it would be as-is with any enhancement of the millings as necessary to keep dust down. You can see the photos we took on there. That's the existing condition now. And if the engineer felt some enhancement would be needed, that we would, we would, they would have to do something. And there's a couple areas we'll talk about later where they might be able to reduce the milling and add some more landscaping.
There was a concern from the front of the building to the existing house that is there now.
It's very beat up. I was there yesterday.
There's a lot of asphalt millings from the previous tenant. There's a lot of issues. That would actually be all grass now and landscaping. So if the doctors looked out from their windows or that, you know, we would, obviously, we would kind of like to put a fence along that property line, but we would also be doing landscaping.
That area?
That area that Sean's talking about right there.
Okay. And one more question. For the detention, you're providing it for first flush. Why first flush only, not 100-year?
Steve Wagner, Sharp Engineering, 101 North Washington, Oxford, Michigan. I spoke with the engineer, and that's the settlement we came to, because it's an existing site. We're probably reducing the impervious surface on the site by pulling the millings a little tighter to the site. Where the building is proposed is millings right now, so we're not, we're not really increasing the impervious. So that's, that was the idea. We're using an existing low area on the site, expanding it. And then everything will sheet flow off the back to the east to a drain.
So where the building is, it's an existing milling?
About, yeah, about half of it, I would say.
The proposed building?
Yeah. And then there's areas of millings on the site that Sean was talking about, and that I think Glenn will get into later, where we're going to pull that in, make that work, because it is close to the doctor's office, directly to the south, to the east, however you want to call it. They were at a 45. So in general, the idea is to kind of make it a little more compact with the work area and frame it off with the building and the proposed landscaping.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Turner?
Probably for Mr. Wagner. Looking at the property and recognizing what's on the northern side of you, and since this building's caused heartburn for the neighbor to the south, why could you not place that building on the northern property line directly across from where it is? Just flip-flop.
So, there's a few reasons why we're doing that. We are bringing a water main onto the site. There's easier access to that main on Auburn Road from the north side of the property. There's some significant trees on the south side, existing septic on the south side. Again, I mentioned framing off the site. Part of the reason of putting it on the south property line, the building that is, is to shield the neighbor to the south from seeing the yard, not that it's a very active yard as we've gotten into. But by putting the building on the north side of the site, then, the neighboring property would see not only the building, granted it'd be farther away, but they'd see the building and the trucks, where we thought this was a better solution.
Well, it seemed like if you flipped it, I'm not arguing with you, but if you flipped it and you put more, more screening on the southern property line, it seems like it would address both issues they face. You would screen their property from the, all of the new way storage. And if you put the trees in the south property line, you could help screen this area, which would really be the backs of trucks, instead of the building. That's just, they seem to be concerned about it, and I don't understand why it just could not be flipped, because it seems like it would fit in that area better with traffic flow, too.
We could look into it. We are proposing landscaping on that south property line to blend into the existing trees that are there. Apparently, some trees and vegetation was whacked by the previous owner. So we're trying to restore that with some spruces, which, I mean, they're going to get to be 20, 30 feet tall. We can look at moving it to the north property line, but we feel for their business, this is going to be the best setup.
Mr. Chairman?
Okay. Can I offer, can I offer a comment to that?
Yeah, go ahead.
I think the way, another reason it works better from a circulation standpoint is a driveway that comes in, they only have to maneuver slightly south to access the building. That parking lines up with the building, with the current access on Auburn Road a little better. By flipping it, you expose more of that site to the view from the office building. You know, unless you did a 50-foot berm along, I think the part, the building helps shield that. That with a combination of some more landscaping effectively blocks that visual field. So I think it's more effective, and you don't, you have less maneuvering for the vehicles, which could be a problem. So, I did talk to the doctors about this. I mean, we want to satisfy that concern to the extent we can because of what they've had to endure on the site. But I think this design is the best possible solution.
It does look like the distance between the, where they're proposing the parking, that area for the green space between that northern boundary is about the same as the space between that building and the property line. So, I don't know that you would get that much more vegetation.
If they do the landscaping which they've proposed, so you have the property line, you have the landscaping, then you have the building, and then to the southeast of that towards Auburn Road, you have more landscaping. So visually, this is going to look so much better, and the building sort of hides that sort of, what's left, which is the parking for their service vehicles, because they won't have to see that. They come in, the building blocks if they leave, and I think, you know, we've corrected that nuisance potential.
We also felt that it would, you know, because they are a doctor's office, we felt the building would also reduce the sound of, you know, of the trucks and stuff like that coming in, too, because now it would be a structure versus landscaping.
Any other questions?
I have a question.
Commissioner Moore?
As far as, you had mentioned there were, you have commercial vans, and then your storage area would, as far as your fertilizer, would that be inside storage?
That would be in the building, correct.
And so the, the only, as far as the deliveries for the fertilizer and the storage, that would, that would be your only large trucks that would come in and out?
Delivery once a week.
Okay.
Yep.
And do they deliver at, you know, between, what are your operating hours?
Our hours are, um, eight to five.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other, any other comments or questions from the board? Hearing done. Okay, thank you. We see. This is the only public hearing, the planning, excuse me, commission will hold on this special land use request. All remarks will be entered into the record for Township Board evaluation. We are recommending bodying. The Township Board will evaluate our recommendation. The Township Board will make the final decision on this special land use request. At this time, anyone is welcome to come and ask any questions or offer your opinion.
Good evening. Thank you for hearing me. My name is Ron Denowitz, and my address is 1175 West Long Lake Road in Troy, Michigan. I'm the attorney for Doctors Soderoff who are here. And I think this commission, this planning commission has heard the long and sordid story that my clients have had to endure with this property. That's how I first got involved, and the word "outdoor storage" is very significant to us. And the request is for outdoor storage. We endured outdoor storage in the past, and it severely disrupted my client's practice. They run a medical practice there. They've been in the community for 15 years. They have a beautiful building. They well-maintain their building. And they've suffered significant disruption. And the use of outdoor storage significantly concerns us, as does the addition of the, it looked to be like a Butler-style metal building. That would be as close as possible on the lot line to my client's current medical building. As they've had to endure vibration, they've had to endure noise, and they've had to endure dust. That significantly impacted their practice. And they're very concerned about what's, what this planning commission is considering here today. We heard today, that's, the application was for outdoor storage, and to me, that means construction equipment. And, and today, we heard, well, it was just going to be pickup trucks. Well, we don't know what the use will be in the future, and once you open the door to this, this property is zoned both C2 and zoned residential. And my client has, has met all of the requirements of zoning and has a fully concrete parking lot. We've heard today that the usage is going to be for gravel, or millings, or something like that, all of which generates a significant amount of dust, all of which impacts the kind of patients that they see in their family practice. We know that, we know that the zoning is C2, and it's supposed to be compatible to the community and to service the local community that's thereby, that's around the area. My client is servicing the local needs of the patients in Shelby Township. We're concerned, very concerned about this proposed use. And the door that you're opening, especially if you allow for, for outdoor storage. We've had to endure outdoor storage before. And Mr. Kirk will tell you, mostly Mr. Huth would tell you, that they actually had to go to court on this matter. And we had to file, the reason I'm involved is we had to file a brief on behalf of the local homeowner, local property owners. So, we're very concerned about the building being very close to us. We're very concerned about the outdoor storage aspect of what they're proposing. And we're very concerned about the parking area being milling or whatever they're talking about. That's fine for Pete Snyder and his truck, truck operation, but we're trying to run a medical practice that's fully compatible with the usage of the property. So, if you're going to consider granting this, what I think to be a nonconforming use, we'd ask you to be very careful in your consideration. We want to be good neighbors. Thank you.
Anyone else?
My name's John Kyle. I resident at 15750 Marcy Drive in Frazier, but I'm here for air conditioning engineers across the street. Originally, we were under the understanding it was going to be semi-trucks. And that's a big problem with the amount of accidents we already have, so.
You got that answer. You received that answer that's not semi?
But in the future, if it's, if it's reclassified, is it going to be semis coming in? That's my problem.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Win?
I can answer that. If they, I can answer both questions. If they, if there was a proposal to do anything outside other than park the vans, they would have to come back to this commission, and we have to go through the process again. So I think it's clarified tonight by Mr. Richter that the only thing outdoors will be the vans. Nothing else. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, can the lawyer confirm that, that's the case? Because I, that's a good point from their attorney. If we're opening Pandora's Box, if the zoning would, if the next, if he sold it 10 years from now, could there be semis in there?
No, if you're granting a special land use with that, you can impose reasonable conditions. Hours of operation, the type of trucks, whatever you want to do. They're asking for special consideration. You can put conditions on it.
So we could state a condition that you would be happy with, that says as long as it's just Chevy, no heavy trucks?
Just no heavy trucks.
Okay.
Thank you.
Maybe not specify Chevy.
Ford, preferably Ford. We buy Ford.
American, domestically made.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question, Mr.?
Sure.
Can I ask the engineer a question?
Let me, let me do the...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Yeah. I appreciate you wanting to expedite this, but let me, let me go through the process. Someone's got short timer's disease on us here. Mr. Win's retiring at the end of June, so, any opportunity, we have to give him a dig. We give him a dig. All right, give him a dig.
If there's no one else, I'd move to close the public hearing, or bring, well, you got to bring, he's...
Yes. Is there anyone else that wishes to address this body? Go on once, go on twice. Mr. Flynn?
Okay, I'd move to close the public hearing.
There's support?
Support.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Win?
I just had a question for the engineer about the building placement. I agree that's the best placement, but you have 45 feet between the parking spaces and the north elevation of the building. Do you need all that space, or is it possible that it could be adjusted a little bit and the building moved a little further away from the property line?
It's possible it could be moved. The 45 feet allows emergency vehicles to be able to get in and maneuver, which I'm guessing we'll have to submit some sort of plan during the engineering phase that shows...
No, probably not. I don't think so for this.
Returning, well, okay.
But I mean, any, any few feet that you could gain would address part of that concern by giving...
Allow for additional plantings between the building and the southern property line.
I mean, I'm just thinking 5 to 10 feet would do a world of good, so.
It could. My thought is that they will make up that 5 to 10 feet in the future and say, hey, we'd like to have a little bit more, and then they'll push closer to the northerly property line, whereas now, we're kind of insulated by about 20 feet on both sides.
Yeah, just a thought, that's all. I just, if that could be adjusted in some way, a few feet could make a difference.
The petitioner could come on up.
Just trying to find some design solution. I mean, what you don't see on this plan is...
He works for you, so I kind of want to hear. You see you nodding or shaking your head.
Okay, sorry.
All right. So what are your thoughts on what Mr. Win has suggested?
What I worry about with that, with even coming in 5 or 10 feet, I mean, I guess I'd have to relook at it with the engineer, is, one, there was something about here with emergency vehicles coming into the property and turning around. And then also, the way you come in to the property, you know, through the gate, there, you know, there's the house, and then there is an existing garage. So if we brought the building further out, that would, you know, might limit a little bit of access. It might make it a little tight.
Well... I think a trade-off might be to add some more spruces along that south property line.
Can I ask another suggestion?
Mr. Win?
So the park, your parking on the north property line is 27 feet from the property line.
Yeah.
Is there any reason you couldn't push the parking a little further towards that northern property line, towards New Way?
It could be. Again, we're trying to be as low-impact as possible.
Well, New Way's not the, I mean, you're not going to impact New Way.
Right. I understand. And we're facing a building of similar ilk to this one. But we're using the existing millings. So we, we're that northerly edge of our parking lot, where the striping is shown on the millings, we obviously would not be striping it per se. But in order to not do as much earthwork, we would just chop the lot off right there. I understand what you're saying. It could, it could be expanded in the future, but at this time, we're just, we're leaving that buffer there. There's a 40-inch element, I believe, kind of in the middle of that bank of parking.
Well, I guess what I'm saying, any, any effort that could be made to increase the spacing would be desirable, even 5 feet.
Because ultimately, we're just going to, we'll make a recommendation one way or the other. This does have to go to the Township Board, who may actually look at these questions and say, okay, did you address any of these things?
So are you saying you want the building, like, right now, there's a 20-foot easement off the property line from the doctors? You want to come in another 5 feet?
No, I want you to move it back 5 feet.
Oh, back 5 feet?
Towards the, towards the New Way side, 5 feet.
Okay.
Yeah, to the north.
And then just move your parking a little closer to the...
Even if you didn't move the parking, you know, 45 feet's a lot of maneuvering space between the edge of the parking space and the front of the building.
So, I get where you're coming from with that. I mean, it just added expense, because we got to bring a fire hydrant in. So now we got to probably bring that fire hydrant further back to cover that 250-foot radius.
I don't think so. We're asking, just move the building just a little bit to the north. That's all.
Okay.
Not, not back.
Okay.
For the sake of increasing the buffer.
I would be fine with 5 feet, then.
I think that helps. Because the, this minimum setback is 20 feet, so they're complying. I mean, you know, they've met the setback. That's a normal setback, plus the setback between the doctor. And then you, we have some requirements for the landscaping. You put that in between, and the landscaping, could you point out that area, the landscaping between?
Yes.
The existing building, the other building. If you look at it now, it's all millings, and it looks really bad from the doctor's side. You know, visually, it's awful looking.
This area here could be utilized as, as parking, for more parking spaces. But since it is so close to the doctor's office, which actually looks like it's about 25 feet off the, or 20 feet off the property line, they're going to make that kind of their lunch area, just lawn, landscape, and then a tree.
Yeah, I need, speaking to the mic.
So that area, that area will then become landscaping?
Correct. To summarize, between Auburn Road and the proposed building, currently millings, they're going to make it lawn, landscape, and not use it for any kind of storage because of the proximity to the neighbor.
Okay.
It's going to be all grass and landscape, and then we wanted to put a fence up there, too, and then, you know... feet off of the property line also as a buffer, uh, with some trees out there also on that other side of the fence by the doctor's office. That fence would go down the property line and then attach to the building.
Really, whatever the neighbor would prefer to see, if they'd rather a fence on the property line, or if they'd want to see the fence set back with, with more landscaping in between.
Okay. Uh, so, the, you know, the question by, by both parties was about outdoor storage, so the only, you're clear that the only outdoor storage we're talking about are the, your delivery, your, the vans that deliver your product?
Correct.
Okay.
Like, I, we're seasonal, we don't work in the winter, we don't do snow, we don't have skid steers, we don't.
Okay.
You know, we're just.
So, no, that if you, if your business model changes, then you'll need to come back and get approval for anything other than what we're talking about this evening?
Yeah.
Two other suggestions. So, if you're inclined to support this tonight on the motion, I would take out number two and say no outdoor storage is allowed except for service vehicles as specified, and I would add number four, hours of operation, which are, I think you said?
Eight to five.
Like, eight to five?
Eight to five? Yeah.
Or half the year.
Half the year, yeah. Well, season, on a seasonal basis. That's a huge difference from what used to be out there, and, and I, I would remind everybody that we're dealing with an area of the township that had been developed and allowed to be used for many years outside the parameters of zoning. So, the goal is, let's bring these sites back into compliance, and this is as close as I think we've ever gotten on one of these sites, when you have existing conditions. This isn't a greenfield site, so we're not starting from scratch. I think this is the best possible use there.
So, eight, eight to five, I mean, you're living with eight to five?
I mean, our guys do come in at seven, but usually, we're leaving by eight. I mean, so if you want to say seven to five?
Seven to six.
There you go.
Okay, okay.
Well, you need a little flexibility.
Yeah, no, you get where I'm going, because, yeah, I mean, even if somebody, you know?
No, I understand a hundred percent.
Because you get called on at five-thirty and say, well, it only happened once, well, guess what, it's a violation, so, because you agreed to it, so, all right, so.
And if I could add, uh, Glenn brought up greenfield, a three-acre site zoned C2, uh, or at least, at least two and a half acres. I know we've got the split zoning. Uh, this is a pretty low-impact development, at, at least in my opinion, for what could be on the property. We see New Way, their property, um, which, not to be disparaging at all to them, but their site is, is higher impact, uh, parking lots, buildings.
It's a different business, too.
Correct. Yeah, I understand.
Yeah, okay.
And we did purchase it last year, and I feel that, you know, there was a lot of blight on that property, and, you know, we've already cleaned it up quite a bit, and then, you know, even though we're not there, you know, we've made improvements to the existing house already with new windows and stuff like that. We're dealing with, um, the building department on some stuff on the house. We're just waiting for a final, uh, approval on that. Um, and then, also, you know, those millings and all that stuff that was there was growing weeds that were like two, three feet tall, and we, you know, we managed that throughout the summer, so the doctors wouldn't have to look at that while the property's not empty also.
Just give Mr. Flynn credit for stealing you away from Utica.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if, just one comment. This happens a lot, uh, as we get these places, uh, up to code, and, uh, to some extent, you're being punished for the sins of the, of the previous owner, uh, and we want, we do want to avoid that, but I think in this case, uh, it sounds like a reasonable use, and, uh, we're happy that the, the other guy is gone.
Okay, great. Uh, any other comments? Mr. Win?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Very thankful, gentlemen. Uh, our recommendation this evening must be based on the following standard: compatibility with adjacent land uses consistent with and promote the intent and purpose of the special land use, compatibility with the natural environment, consistent with capacities, excuse me, of public services and facilities affected by the proposed use, protect public health, safety, and welfare, and the adequacy of public access to the site. Uh, we may recommend approval. We may recommend, uh, just to disapprove the request or table to evaluate the information further. At this time, I entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Turner?
I move to recommend approval to the Township Board of Site Plan Number nineteen-oh-eight SLU three to permit the use of property at five-two-eight-one Auburn Road for a landscaping company with limited outdoor storage based on the following: The proposed site plan brings this parcel into closer compliance with applicable zoning ordinance requirements. The only outside storage that will be allowed on-site is the delivery vans that will be used by the applicant. The proposed site improvements improve the compatibility of this parcel with adjoining uses and minimize the potential for nuisances, and the hours of operation will be seven AM to six PM seasonally.
Support.
Okay, moved by Turner.
Mr. Chairman, I would ask that the motion maker and the secondor, uh, maybe we need a little bit more detailed description of the, what delivery vans means, uh, so no